Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Oregon Board of Education's regular meeting of January 8th. We'll have the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. The moment of silence tonight is for Norm Schenk, who was a Clay counselor, and Linda Hanson, who was one of our bus drivers. Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is one nation, under God, with liberty, justice, and our own.
Thank you. Do we have the roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Cathers, here. Mrs. Mulvaney?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting, which I forgot to do. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, and we do have an addendum. It goes on the consent agenda item under items A and B, employing substitutes, a resignation. And may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? A second discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Public participation at meetings. Do you have any cards?
I have nothing.
I have nothing either. Okay, thank you. At this time, the board welcomes comments on how the Oregon City Schools utilize their ARP IDEA funds. Any comments?
We just asked. So the federal grants we receive each year, we typically do this in June with our annual grant. It's an IDEA special education requirement that we put the comment out. It's kind of a formal way towards approving the grant. But because there was a, I guess, an additional ester fund, if you will, but it's called ARP IDEA of $186,000, that's the amount that we do it again at this point. This is a one-time thing that we'll have to do.
Is this more for special education?
It's all special education. The Individuals with Disabilities Act, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I throw on IDEA. That's been the acronym for the law that backs special education.
Any further questions? Okay, item number six, F, community recognition.
Well, I just want to, I guess, use this moment as board. If you don't know, January is Board of Education Month. So exciting time for all of us, but I'd just like to publicly and certainly recognize all of you for being a board member. We certainly want to recognize all of you in front of our public and thank you for your service. And we just like to put the amount of years because it really helps us focus how long many of us have been a part of this organization. And so obviously, Lindsay, welcome. Lindsay's our newest member. Obviously, this is her first regular board meeting, so we wish her the best. I don't know if she's a little nervous or not, but she seems like she's old hat at it. But she's brand new. And Mike Scott here, Mike Shea, he's out of town right now, but he's been with us for 10 years, serving the district. Jeff has been on the longest, 14 years combined service over his many years of serving the district. And Dan is, I wasn't exactly sure, two to three years that he's been a part of us in some combined years, and now he's a full member. And then certainly Carol, who's been our president for the majority for 12 years. We can't thank you enough for leading us down a lot of roads and certainly through this COVID. So you each have a certificate that the Ohio School Board sends out saying thank you, and we have a little poster up here. But I don't know if you got the oracle yet, but it also kind of did a similar little thank you and congratulations to you in the oracle. It is a times a thankless job. It is at times a rewarding job, and hopefully you'll continue to find it rewarding as we move through this. And it's nice to feel like maybe we're moving past, you know, the COVID controversy stuff that we've dealt with for so long. It feels like we can get back to talking about the things that matter the most because our kids and what we do with them every day. So anyways, thank you for everything you guys do. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Thank you. Treasuries report, Mrs. Bruce.
All right. Hello, everyone. I included in your packet a couple things. The first item is not a big deal. It's the updated permanent appropriation measure. I've only changed a few items. It would have been, I did change the general fund. And we'll talk about that later in my report. And then the only other items that changed, this is the time of year when the Pride Department of Education finalizes everybody's final expenditure reports from last year's budgets, and then they carry over, they allocate, and then they see if there's any other money left over for any of the grants, and you have a little bit taken and added to the grants. So there's some very modest changes to the 500, which are the federal grants. They're very modest. I mean, if you compare it, like, one was $8. So I don't want to, you know, get all excited, but that's it. That's all that has been adjusted on this for this time. The rest of my report is going to pretty much be, we discussed the finance committee. First, we did have a clean audit, so that's nice. No citations or findings. Tonight, we are asking that we write off, we had some of these uncollectible fees in the amount of $3,600. Most of these are from, like, 2,000 stuff. I mean, they're quite old. I've shared the list with the finance committee. And I thank Sandra, my assistant. She run every place she could get these funds. So it's, we can't, collection is a dead end. So we're just going to write it off. These are all very old. These are not current at all. We do need to consider a physical inventory update. It's been 15 years. This is billions, I think it's over $5,000. So it's been 15 years since we've done one. We've been keeping it current as best we can. But I think for insurance purposes, it'd be wise to do another update on our physical inventory. We did discuss the PRW. We find that the earliest we can consider it is in the November 2022 election. So we're going to put that on hold and kind of worry about that later. We did get the state update. And if you pull up the reports I have behind the report, I usually do things from back, but it's a little hard to look between the two that way. The foundation, the way they've done state funding now with the new formula is a little bit different. And so what I tried to do is if you just look at the foundation line on what I guess I call this the revenue analysis, but it's line three, the 0013110 account. If you just look at state foundation, it looks like we have like a 12% increase in the new foundation. And that's not really accurate. I thought it'd be nice to just give you a brief notice of what it really is. They moved things around, so I'm trying to look at apples to apples so we can do a real comparison. So 13.3 million in foundation. If you look down, I have highlighted in yellow down below, there's something called Gifted Education, English Learners, and Student Wellness and Success. Those have been moved around from other funding sources. And basically, these are now considered targeted funding. So they're, some of these used to be in the foundation line, and now they're truly under targeted funding. So what I did is I just said, okay, takes a 13.3. If I were to subtract out the gifted funding, I apologize, add in the gifted funding because that's how we got it last year. It was just in the foundation amount. Add in what little bit we get for English learner, language learners, very small amount. If you were to look at this year's, it'd be 13.5 million that we were getting in foundation. Last year, we got 11.9 million. But then I would need to add in open enrollment because they used to put open enrollment down in other income. And now it is actually part of the foundation. So when you actually compare the two, it's truly flat. It's a .06% decrease, but that's pretty much flat funding for us, okay? We're now on the formula. We were in a formula district for about 10 years or so. So we're now on the formula. So the variations in our students will affect our funding. Another item that is now under V will show up in the general fund that never did in the past, but we will be receiving it. In 2122, the student wellness money, which is a very big program that the governor is, the line is very, well, he's very proud of that. And we need it for our kids. This year, it's in our funds here of $484,000. Last year, we got $470,000, but they were in a state grant, so they weren't showing in the general fund at all. I'm just trying to help you see that, you know, there are, it's kind of a give and take. So we're really pretty flat on this funding. Career tech funds, DPIA, those are handled the exact same way they have been in the past, and there were slight reductions in those areas, okay? I just wanted to point that out. I think I'm saying it's fun blue in the face, but it's just going to look weird when you're preparing year to year. And that's why I want to keep playing this out. So unless there are questions about any of the other items, that is my report for tonight. And I did change the one behind here. I did change the true cash report to reflect the way we're going to be getting the money based on the latest state estimate. These estimates will still change. This is, I would say, we're probably 80% good. And hopefully, we'll adjust the Friday forecast in February to reflect it. But throughout the year, they're still working on some of the detail and some of the calculations. So this was a big endeavor by the High School Education to get this rolling, especially when they don't wait till, they wait till end of June before they even pass anything effective July 1. So that's all I thought of, less than a question, okay?
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the treasuries report, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or any further questions? Roll call.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item A, executive session. Does anyone feel the need for an executive session at this time? We will have one at the end of the meeting, but I see no one wants one right now. Consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing a motion, is anybody to vote on the consent agenda items? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? A second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, board-approved training. We need a motion to approve the attendance of interested board members at the following workshops. Board member 101, Board Leader Institute, Leadership Institute in Columbus. The OSBA Northwest Region Spring Conference, allowing the district to cover registration fees, mileage, meals, and lodging as provided for in Board Policy BHBA. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? A second discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Item B, Ohio Education Policy Institute. I need a motion to renew the 2022 OEPi membership in the amount of $1,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? A second? Discussion?
Quick question. What is the difference between B and C? Being that they're both kind of policy-related, but two different organizations?
B, autospective. B used to be called something else, but this is where we have the economists that run all the calculations. And they actually help the state analyze the financial data, and they really help a lot of the districts see what the state's doing to us as they analyze. So that is truly more the financial economic group.
Okay.
And then the other one is obviously our board policy. I don't know. There's no more to say.
Got the problem. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item C, OSBA Policy Service. We need a motion to renew the agreement with OSBA to provide a web-based policy service at the cost of $1,540. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item D, Ohio High School Athletic Association. We need a motion to approve participation in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for grades seven through 12 for the 2022-23 school year. Upon taking this action, the Oregon Board of Education is agreeing that our athletic program will be conducted in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, interpretations, and divisions of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. This resolution shall remain in effect for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
There's a quick question for Hal. With this and the OEPi probably about women's wrestling and men's volleyball, any discussion for us on any of either of those? I know we added lacrosse recently, and we have.
I have not had any formal conversations with anyone at this point, although I really have no idea where either one of those stands. You know, I guess if it's like lacrosse and the interest kind of grows and, you know, swells and we get a lot of interest, we do like a pilot, kind of like what we did swimming, kind of what we did with lacrosse, and do it a pilot for a year or two and see how it goes and go from there. Now, I, you know, I don't think we've had female wrestlers in the past, or at least maybe one.
We have one.
K-Ro members. So I don't know if we would have a team, but certainly if a female wrestler wanted to compete, we would figure out a way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item E, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Barry Ramelow donated $1,000 to the Athletic Boosters in memory of Richard E. Plante. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved. Thanks to Mr. Ramelow.
A second? A second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item F, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of the following. A cart, a desk, a charging cart, a garden killer, a tree sprayer, a monitor, and an overhead projector. May I have a motion to dispose of these things, please?
So moved.
A second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item G is a resolution authorizing the employment of certain individuals granted temporary substitute licensure in accordance with House Bill 409. That's a whole page long. I'm not going to read it, but it just allows us to hire anybody with a high school diploma who passes security clearance and the interview process for the this academic year only. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Second? Discussion or questions?
I'll just add that I went to a meeting just last week, and there is discussion of making it permanent in the legislature, whether it will or won't. Yet to be seen, but there is discussion about that. So obviously, as superintendents, we're all hoping that is the case. Gives us a lot of flexibility with good people.
And if President Hal had set to fire at the end of this school year.
End of this school year, yep. It didn't start until end of October, so it's kind of like, and they kind of did the same kind of last year, so we hope they don't wait into next year to make decisions when our hiring happens in the summertime or right at the beginning. So let's hope.
Have we picked up a?
Oh, yeah, quite a few. Quite a few. I could put a number, but I bet it's over 15.
Okay, further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulvaney?
Yes.
Item H, locally-defined diploma seals. We need a motion to exclude the locally-defined diploma seals for the graduating class of 2023 and beyond. This documentation was distributed to the board. This has to do with the requirements for graduation. There are certain areas where our students must comply and take courses and so forth. Would you like to add more?
I'd like to invite Mr. Sieg up with his friend.
Yes.
But Mr. Sieg here specifically just, you know, to kind of explain or to answer questions about the process. So if you don't mind, or we'll just, just.
But first, we have to introduce Barlow.
Yeah, we could do that. He could do that. I don't know if he might have flipped it on me.
Yes, I do have Barlow with me. Barlow is a trained facility dog. He was trained at Circle Tail in Cincinnati. My wife and I have been interning facility dogs for about a year and a half. So he's living with us currently, and we kind of grew attached. So we approached Mr. Gregory about the idea of Oregon schools acquiring Barlow full-time. He will continue to live at my house, and then we bring him to school, where he would then go to the counselors department and be there for our students throughout the day before and then come with me. So he's great. He's about 20 months old. He's gone through several trainings to ignore food in students' hands, to not eat food off the floor. As we walk through the hallways, he's trained to draw attention to the handler. So he's providing an experience where he's not running up on students or invading their space. And we're real excited for the possibility. I've brought him to school about five times now, and there are lots of students talking about him.
And he's bored.
Yeah, you ever say that.
He's probably tired. He's been here all day.
Yeah. So his name's Barlow, right? B-A-R-L-O-W?
Correct.
Is that how we spell it? So Barlow. And I also want to give a thanks to Elena, his wife, Greg's wife, who really has taken a passionate and finding and working with these dogs along with Greg and the family. But she's somebody that's very, you can tell when you meet with her, very passionate. She's a counselor at Perry'sburg, just so you know what she does. And she's also, I think, going to be, you know, supporting a pup maybe in Perry'sburg in the near future as well. And one of the hardest things that I've learned over the course of probably the last four years, having discussions with principals about how to obtain a, you know, a dog. And I'm learning there's lots of names, like different types of dogs. There's therapy dogs. There's facility dogs. There's certainly the dogs that support, you know, people with different disabilities and so forth. But Elena has made the process understandable. She's taken the ownership of trying to figure out how to go through the process of, and the dog is, you know, born, and how to get fosters, and then how you actually get a connection and get one into a school. And that's where, as a superintendent, that's the part that's hard to figure out. You hear about these three- or four-year waiting lists to even get a dog. So anyways, I feel very fortunate. You know, we've been talking about a dog, I think, directly for a while, but and then, you know, certainly this one, I feel like kind of fell in our lap. So I do want to give you my sincere thanks and very excited. I mean, he's such a wonderful dog. I'll talk a little bit more about him in my update about cost and those types of things. But if you wouldn't mind giving just a quick background of the seals and then how the process you used to come up with the locally-defined seals.
Sure. So the state passed the new graduation requirements for the class of 2023, starting, they passed them back in 2018. So when the freshmen got here, the guidelines were laid out. The part the state did not detail out was the locally-defined seals, which is what you guys are voting on. They have told us for about the past three years that they were going to give us model seals or model curriculum for those, what they were expecting in that seal. And to date, we have not gotten it. So we have been on top of this from the start, researching it, trying to make sure we can implement it as best as possible. In terms of the local seals, Mr. Zabisky has a coalition of principals in the area that he's been working with. I've been working with the assistant principals in the area, trying to gauge out what is appropriate, what is attainable in terms of these seals. So what you are seeing in our local seals is very similar to what Mommy, Perry'sburg, Anthony Wayne, Southmuir, Bowling Green are all putting into place. Additional areas of the graduation seals, it basically breaks down into three aspects now that a student must meet all three of. Credits, competency, and readiness. So credits are fast in the classes. Competency is primarily tied to state testing, but that there are additional pathways. And then the readiness, students need to earn two seals. Again, state defined clearly nine of them, and then the other three they left out for us. So part of being at Clay, I'm very proud that we offered the career tech in-house. So our career tech already has a hand up on the industry-recognized credential seal. We've begun implementing, you know, Um, we've began implementing, you know, how many of these jobs are already in a seal in all of our career tech programs as well? And we are taking steps to get the seal by literacy. So the last step was kind of detailing out our local seals and then what that process looked like.
So, so one of the questions, uh, that I received was, okay, there are, these, these are the seals. They're the defined seals, right? And then three of them, though, will give us latitude locally.
Correct.
To define. And so you went through a process to define the community service seal. So tell me what, what, how can a kid earn that?
So the community service seal is earned through fifty, uh, what we may know as fifty hours of community service, of volunteer work, unpaid volunteer work. In your packets, there are a couple verification forms and then tracking forms to help students, um, get those pre-approved and then also keep track of how many they, uh, how many hours they have acquired. Fifty hours is in line with what, uh, the 2019 alternative pathway was, as well as it's kind of the middle ground for our local area high schools. Uh, we, most of the high schools around here were between forty and sixty. So fifty is right in the middle of that, um, in terms of community service hours. For fine and performing arts, um, with our line lighters and our arts classes here, we wanted to try and capture those all into one. Uh, so the fine and performing arts was a couple options. You can have three full credits of a fine and performing arts, um, band or art classes. Or if you were participating in the line lighters productions, that's another way you can reach, uh, the fine and performing arts specifically. And student engagement, um, we offer, uh, numerous clubs. I think we have twenty-nine athletic teams in the building. So we wanted to provide an opportunity for students to earn the seal through what we offer here. Um, you can see that, uh, two full seasons of athletic participation. Um, or, um, participating and mixing between the performing arts and line lighters and then also your athletic teams.
When we say seal, what does that mean? Is it something physically, a sticker, an embossment? What?
It is a mark on their diploma, so they do get a, uh, seal indicating they've earned or met that criteria. It is a mark of achievement, so just a bike mark, uh, does not, uh, you can earn up to all twelve of them. Uh, that doesn't give you a super diploma.
So you require it in two, but if you earn them all, you get them all on your diploma.
Are they marked specifically, do you know, on a diploma? Or is it just a check mark essentially that you've met your, the seal portion?
I believe they have, uh, specific stamps that go along with it.
Okay, that's good enough.
They also show up on the high school transcript. While this does apply to the class of 2023, we did, the state allowed us to start issuing seals as soon as they passed this. So the last two graduating classes have earned seals that have gone on their transcripts, um, as a mark of their achievements.
And who's responsible for, uh, obviously tracking all this? Is it up to the counselors for the most part and you?
This is a, a task, so it is spread among several people. So, uh, I am involved in it, um, in helping track. Counselors are involved with it. Our career tech department is involved with it. Uh, it, it takes everybody to kind of come together and communicate and, um, make sure that we're, we're not missing anything.
And if someone, so can they check that kind of the student they think are on track or something? Make sure that, to verify that, is it just trapping with the counselor at a certain point in time?
Um, we are starting our, um, scheduling meetings this coming up. I think next week, we're going to start meeting with students to do scheduling, as with counselors do. Uh, they will discuss those at that time. A lot of these kind of happen automatically. So the, uh, citizenship seal and the science seal are directly tied to state tests. So that is something I do where I export state tests, run checks to see which kids have gotten it. And then we update it into the cloud. So that's something that they do not have to apply for, and that's automatic. College ready seal as well, that's tied to ACT and SAT. That's another thing that we do automatically.
Okay, thank you.
So because students could start earning immediately, there are graduating seniors next year who will be required to have this, who may have already met the qualifications because things they've been doing in the last three years.
Yeah.
Not the locally based seals because they've not been formally available for documentation.
Correct.
The state-based seals.
Correct.
Have been able to achieve those.
Yes, so, um, and even in the class of 2022, there are two to three students who did not meet state testing requirements, but they do meet the seals requirements and the new.
So retro, like.
Yeah.
Seeing that they can, if they can have documentation back from the ninety-three years, something they couldn't.
Correct. Correct. So, um, the, anybody in the class prior to 2023 can use this process, but starting in 2023, they have to use this process.
Are there clubs that are, would not be considered athletic-based, but aren't fine and performing arts, student government? I'm blanking on another good example, but do those, um, United Nations, do those qualify an option two under student engagement? Would those be quote, performance-based extracurricular activities?
The performance base would be tied to marching band or to, um, the line lighters productions.
Okay.
I do not think we included clubs specifically, um, again, because we're trying to align with what other high schools were doing as well.
Okay.
And, and just to make sure, you can only use one of the locally seals, right?
You can earn all three, but in terms of meeting your two seal requirement, you can only count one.
One towards it. So I just, I, and I guess I ask that just to make sure that the public that's watching doesn't think that a student can do two of those versus one of the, I guess it's either, it's what, two of the other ones?
One of the state and then one of the local.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, but what you had in your packet was, uh, top page explaining the credits, competency and readiness. The state seals, um, are criteria for local seals and then verification forms and tracking forms are what's in there.
You did a nice job presenting this. I mean, this is, this is, I mean, even the packet is, is very professional, I think, easily.
I wish I could take credit for the packet, but I am not. It's artistically designed.
But one of your team is, so we'll give it up in credit, so.
As far as communicating this with our community, um, is there, has there been discussion as far as going up a plan for communication to the families of the children that were in the district? Uh, we bring it up at every, um, meeting where we bring parents in. It's been something we try to put in their hands. We try to communicate it as best as possible. Uh, I think as opposed to previous years where you could lay out, here's your test, here's the scores you need to get. This is a detailed process. It's going to take some time to get people to really comprehend all of the intricacies of, well, you could do this, or you could do this, or you could do this, or you could do this. So you can go for this seal or you can go for this seal, but if you're in this program, you can go for that seal. There's lots of, uh, lots of intricacies to try and figure out. So it's, it's not a short conversation, uh, but, uh, when the eighth graders came over and their parents came over, that was something we discussed when our counselors go over to the eighth graders, they discuss it. And then, as I mentioned earlier, when our counselors start meeting with students here in the next week for scheduling, it's front and center. Here's where you're at. Here's what your pathways, available options are.
Then we could certainly do a, 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 a large scale communication on it now that, you know, so many word approves it tonight. Uh, it makes it pretty more, much more public than maybe it was in the past.
It was certainly a big help to parents, uh, of the children.
Yeah, I can, I can get with, with, with Greg and we can, we can make sure we get some off through one of our OCS communication email blasts.
And maybe even a, you know, pre-recorded and doing a pre-recording that can be sent out. People can watch or available from the website.
And we can do that. Absolutely. Try and explain it and make it as simple and as understandable as possible. Trust me, if you can get me to understand it, you did a great job, so.
One last question. You mentioned on the community service that the fifty hours was sort of in line with kind of local expectations, right? In a middle ground. The fine and performing arts and student engagement, kind of the specific numbers about numbers of credits and seasons, is that, that was also up to the discretion of your team, I assume, and is that also kind of just the middle ground of?
Yeah, it knows a pretty well consensus of where we're trying to settle on. If you, we look at other, um, policies, they may not look as pretty as this, um, but in terms of the meat potatoes and what exactly you need to do, uh, very much in line.
Thank you. Glad you're working with other districts in case a child moves from one to another, they'll apply. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. So we did that a little bit backwards. We need a, a motion to accept the locally defined diploma seal?
So moved.
A second? Second. Okay, any further discussion in the end? And thank you, Mr. Sieg. That was great. Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Savick? Yes. Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Okay, um, item I is a motion to approve the agreement between green options for autism of Lucas County for G O A L and the Oregon City Schools for Educational Services, January eighteenth through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of twenty-one thousand ninety dollars. This is for the education of one of our autistic people who needs, um, a special place to go for schooling. Greg, have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Savick? Yes. Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Okay, superintendents report.
Thank you. Just a lot of the standard stuff that I'd like to share here at the meetings and, and obviously COVID, uh, is, is, we'll start like, like typical. And I just, I show you these two graphs. They're the two that I, I like to use just to kind of show where the county is progressing and where we are with positive cases. So if you look at the first graph there, that's our positive, uh, cases by week as best we can determine. And just to put a caveat, many of these are parent reports, right? When they were and when they tested. So, you know, I like to use the data nurses enter into our internal sheet and then we use the date of that in terms of which week we consider it. You know, we may not find out for a full week after or even two weeks after that they were positive, and I go back to the date that, that they were. But you can see we had the spike there coming right off the Christmas break, uh, for sure. Uh, that was, that was close to, to, uh, and, and again, this is staff and students combined. So it was, it was close to a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, uh, positive cases reported for that week. Obviously, that goes in line with just about every other school district that, that I'm aware of. Now, you can already see the next week, it dropped, has dropped fairly significantly. We're still getting a few stragglers coming in. Uh, I'm hoping that trend now continues, continues, that, that it drops at the, you know, pretty significant rates. It's what we're hearing. It's what we're hoping. So, uh, again, today was a busy day because of, uh, coming off the, the longer weekend. But, but, uh, you can see in the next one, then you can see the spike of where the Lucas County cases per one hundred thousand. And typically, we're in the bottom third of the state pretty much through this entire pandemic. We're number five. You know, the number five county in terms of cases per, for the highest that I can recall that we, we've ever hit during this whole thing. So hopefully we'll start to see that number drop as well. So clearly, uh, Omicron is, is in our area and our staff. But with that said, we're, we're, we're doing okay with our staffing. I'm very proud of our staff. I'm very proud of our leaders, our nurses, everybody, our subs. Thank you again to all the public that stepped up and is helping us out because it's working. Uh, many districts are at, um, a, I saw one just on, on Friday, it was at a forty-five percent fill rate. In other words, only forty-five percent of their open positions were, were filled and they had over a hundred positions, uh, in a district our size. So, so we're at about, you know, at any given day, you know, we're, we're somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five, maybe up to forty if it's peak, number of staff out district-wide. So we're, we're, we're doing well. I know the principals in the room are, you know, their, their days may not feel that way, but from a ten-thousand-foot level, I, I feel we're doing a great job because I know they're always working with their staff to cover what is uncovered and working very hard. Any COVID-related questions from any of you? I think Jeff, I appreciate, he sends me, you know, kind of the patterns that are coming from the hospital and I kind of get a sense of, of what's going on there as well. It tends to trend, same thing that we're seeing here, so, uh, it confirms kind of what I'm seeing.
Um, Hal?
Yeah.
I, I imagine that there's lots of folks that are already looking forward to the end of the month and wondering what we'll do about the masks.
Yep.
Do you have, uh, um, kind of a, a, a date or a week in which you're anticipating making an announcement just so people can kind of mark it down and?
Sure. Well, at, at this point, I guess, I guess I didn't necessarily put a, put a magical day or week number into it because we, in our last communications, we, we put out that when we get back down to those average, kind of like, you know, ten, eleven, nine, ten, eleven number of positives, that, that's when we would, we would probably move to, to go without masks. So I'm not anticipating that happened by the end of January. Like, uh, at one point I hoped, because you keep hearing that Omicron's going to be peaking and then going down and we hope we see that. I, I'm leaning toward this more likely going to be February at some point. But again, without, without talking to the full board about that, it is my intention that if it gets to a safe level, that, that we'll go back to mask optional. I, I hope. I hope we can get there. But, but I think we made the decision at roughly the right time. I mean, like I said, some people think it was too late. Some people think it was too early or whatever. But, but, uh, uh, you know, Omicron came and, and, you know, I've, I've heard comments, well, you put mask on and it still continued to rise. But, you know, we've been able to keep the doors open and that's been my primary goal. Our primary goal is to bring our kids to school every day, as many that can be here. So I hope that helped.
Yeah, no, I think that'll help folks that are watching just, you know, kind of look forward and anticipate and.
I know other districts have a, a number, right? A, a, like a solid number of where they go up or down. But the problem is, is that can, you know, that can go like this. So I, I, I really liked it and I appreciate, um, you, Lindsay. She helped me kind of think that through before we put the message out that let's get back to where we were when we were comfortable. And when we're back to where we were, we're comfortable, it makes sense. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Barlow, we already saw and met, so I just put a little in there. I won't go through it all again. But I do want to thank Greg, his family and his wife for everything they've done to, to help bring, uh, Barlow to our, to our school system. Barlow's going to cost us six thousand dollars. Um, and that's a deal because now they've already, Circle Tails have already gone up to ten thousand dollars. But because we were in the, I guess, in the queue or whatever, uh, six thousand was the, the cost a while ago. And, and so, uh, it's very reasonable for a dog. We will own Barlow as a district. So even though we're, we have a wonderful host and, and Greg and, and his family, uh, and we have people here at school that will help handle it within our counseling department, uh, we do own it. So if, 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 if the house needs a new owner, then we'll, we'll be in a place where we have to find somebody to house ho- host the dog at their house within our district because it, it doesn't go away if, if they were to move out or somebody else. So, so that's okay. That's just kind of how it is. And, uh, I'm feeling really good about, uh, you know, the cost is six thousand dollars, but I know the foundation is going to make, uh, at their Frost, upcoming Frost Fest here in February. It's, it's virtual now, if you don't know. The Frost Fest was in person, but it's going virtual. Uh, it's going to be one of the featured fundraisers for that particular night. Uh, and, and there's some other people stepping up to help support, uh, the supplies we need, the medical benefits. And we'll be, we'll be sharing all that out here when, when everything's kind of solid. But, uh, again, beautiful little dog. I mean, it's one that the high school and the kids and the staff are going to get accustomed to. And I, and I already tell you, Mr. Jersey's looking forward to, uh, having, uh, having the dog there sneak into his office every once in a while. Help him, uh, get through the day once in a while, so. Any questions on Barlow?
I do, anyone?
Yeah.
So, and you mentioned kind of that there are different types of dogs, a facility dog.
Yeah.
Therapy dog. I'll admit, I'm ignorant as to the differences. So can you help me, just, and I probably should have asked, well?
That's okay. We'll get back up here because I am not solid yet either.
What the, you know, what, what should we expect to see Barlow as a facility dog doing?
Yeah.
And what does a facility dog do exactly?
Yep. I asked the same thing. Good question.
Um, so as, as you mentioned, different types of dogs, um, if you have a, um, facility dog, the, the main goal is to provide companionship, um, and comfort kind of to a large group of people. If therapy dog might prove, uh, might perform a specific task or be there for a specific reason. Uh, but a facility dog is more of a general, um, it here for your enjoyment. And, and, um, research shows that interactions with dogs, uh, releases the hormones that brighten students' day. Um, what we see is some students will come in, they'll be, they'll shy, they'll be shy about something. And if you introduce the dog to them, they open up and they want to tell you everything that's going on. And we also have emotional support dogs or animals. Um, an emotional support animal is a little bit different. That is to be specific to the individual. So the, uh, and then, blanking. The, uh, if you have a service animal, also, uh, would be specific to the individual, but will provide a specific task related to their disability.
And we've had a therapy dog, not that we own, but in one of the buildings.
One of the staff members, yeah. And I don't know if, if that, if maybe it's delineated therapy versus facility dog. I, I'm just learning these new terms.
I, I think facility dog is also kind of a new term that, um, we're getting used to. Kind of where if you talk to your counselors, they do not prefer guidance counselor, they prefer school counselor. It's kind of more specific to the task they're performing. Facility dog, I think, is the, kind of the new word where it's replaced therapy dog, um, or school therapy dog. But it, uh, describes his task a little bit more specific. He's here for the facility. He's here for the, uh, the wellbeing and the emotional support of our students.
But what you're going to see, what I understood is you're not going to see, um, Barlow in the big hallway at Clay High School when all the kids are transitioning. He doesn't like it, at least hasn't right now. Not that he does anything bad. He just shies away from it from, he'd rather be over in a corner. So he's going to be much more in individual situations. You know, he'll be around the school. He'll be with a counselor who can get out and about around the school as much as, uh, again, he's still being trained. He does not come to us officially till March. So he's, that's why he's been in, what'd you say, four or five times, just kind of breaking him in slowly, if you will, and getting him used to the hallways and so forth.
Yeah, they, they consider him fully trained. Um, there's nothing else he has to perform or demonstrate. But he's kind of in an internship before he's officially placed.
That's a good way to say it.
And I assume there will need to be additional staff members trained on handling him?
Yes, um, Mr. Ramsey will be the primary handler during the day, uh, one of the school counselors. He and I go to training in Cincinnati in the beginning of March. And then after that, he will become the official handler in the building. But primarily, it should, it will be him and I who do the handling. If there's a student in another office, he will be allowed to go in there. And you can leave him there. Mr. Ramsey will be able to leave. Uh, but in terms of walking him around, holding the leash, taking him out of offices, that'll be Mr. Ramsey during the day.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Barlow? So again, thank you for bringing it tonight.
I'll be here the whole meeting, so if you guys want to come up and be, and ask.
Well, he's, he's ready for bed, so. So we're going to have to get him a nice green or yellow or, you know. All right. Let me just get back here. Um, I just wanted to give you an enrollment breakdown. I had a few questions about enrollment lately, just because when you start talking about what's going on and, you know, believe it or not, January is when we start, next August, we start planning for next August now. And, and really everything, not everything, but much of the planning starts shifting to the, to the next year. And so we start looking at enrollment. What does that mean for the next year? So just, just to give you an idea of where we're at, this was as of November, uh, Mr. Quig ran this for me. But you can see, uh, the different, the by-rid bottom, the grand total are the, the, the sizes of the full class. And the way he ran it had kindergarten at the end, so you can see kindergarten's kind of at the end, rather than the beginning. But you can see our kindergarten class this current year is two fifty-six, but first grade's only two seventeen. You know, you're, you're looking at how much forty kids difference. And you can see how it's kind of an up and down. Uh, so the small class of two hundred and thirty in sixth grades going into the junior high. So those, that's, that's small group right now, line divide. So those, that's, that small group right now, the line divides seventh and sixth grade. And we're kind of like our enrollment started to shift a little bit downward right around there. And you can just see. So for what it's worth, you can get a sense of how big each school is. At the time of this running, Clay was 1138, Coy was 341, Facet 570, Eisenhower 475, Jerusalem 373, and Star 438. So it gives you just a rough idea.
So Hal, I'm, are you able to go through and look at capacity, you know, based on existing classrooms and keeping it at the student per classroom limit? Because we do got a lot of fluctuation from 305 down to 213, and even by Star School, the grade. We've got a lot of development in Oregon, you know, kids, maybe the younger ones, but they could be young couples with a kid living in some of these developments. In the next five years, we could see some growth. So it would be neat to see kind of, you know, how big, what's our capacity with our existing classroom? How converging that we're.
I think, and I, I think that would be a wonderful exercise as we go through strategic planning when we start talking about things like that. Because here's what we've done in the last, geez, certainly in the six years I've been superintendent, even when I was assistant superintendent, is we've, we've, we're using our classrooms. We added STEM member, the STEM teachers, we've, we've added our STEAM teachers at the elementary. So we've added some things back into the classrooms, which, in that discussion that you're talking about, come into play. So now, now some of those classrooms that we, let's say, were open before when we were higher numbers are now being utilized by a different program or something different. So, so capacity, capacity is, is, if, if we look at every classroom being a quote, let's say, elementary, every classroom being a typical kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade classroom, that, and we don't have rooms for these others, do they go on carts? You know, those are types of things that we would have to really, as a board and administration, had to talk through, what is our max capacity and what do we want it to look like? Because if we say the steam rooms need to remain steam rooms, then that lowers.
Right.
The capacity. So, but yeah, I would love to see, I mean, I feel real good about last year. You know, it was a good bounce for us. Last year might have been a COVID bounce. We don't know because some people kept their kindergartners out the year before. We'll find out, right? We do have our date set for our kindergarten information night in March. Not that that's the perfect way to, to guess what's coming, but we usually get a general sense of, you know, how many are actually interested and show up for that information night. So we'll get that date out to you.
Does this include? March the 9th, 6 o'clock.
March the 9th.
Hal, does this include the, I'll say, the folks that choose this online? Are they, or is this just physical in the building?
I think, I think this has, that's a good question. All our online kids, probably all our online kids. Because they're all tied to the school, but they're.
They're more about students.
That's a good question, though. I didn't ask make that. And I can get this updated for you anytime. I mean, I asked him today, you know, is this a quick report? It is. We can, we can get you updated numbers any way you want. And I have all that. I have all the ODA. I have all the breakdowns by, by programs. I mean, we have it all. You know, we can certainly share that, look at all that if you guys want to get it in the weeds in detail of, of what we have. All right. And then just last but not least, we are, we are, believe it or not, we are in winter. I don't think anybody knows that, but we are in winter. Apparently, there's no snow coming. But I always get the question after we were closed the other day, kind of about, you know, what are the time structures? When you make calls? How do you do all that? So just a reminder to the public that if, if we have a, any kind of calamity weather that we may delay or close school, initially, the latest we would do it is 6 o'clock. Now, you know, I'm looking at Mr. Sanders, we try to do it earlier than that, if at all possible, to give as much time. But the 6 o'clock's when the buses roll. So if it's one of those very empty days, it might be just a little before 6 o'clock. Again, that's, that's given us the cushion. But usually, I think the last one here was around 5:30, 5:35. And then if we're delayed, the latest we'll make a call is 8 o'clock. Typically, it's before that. But the latest we'll make is 8 o'clock. And, you know, if we ever do get snow and we know it's coming, we'll do our best to make those calls at night. And I know people really appreciate that, that, that became evident. I don't know, the couple of times I've been making calls on that. And just to, to give you a background, how it all works, you know, I give props to Josh Shannon, our transportation director, Josh Segre. They're the first to hit the roads in the morning. I mean, they're out real early. They're, they're cruising around. And then they're in contact with Mr. Sandwich, and then he's in contact with me, and it's kind of this circle of communication then that goes on in the morning before we make a decision as much as we can. And then if, if it's a really bad snow day, then I'm in conversations with other superintendents trying to find out what's going on in their districts. And, and we all try to make sure that we're seeing the same things, hearing the same things. And so that's just kind of how it works behind the scenes. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
I know last week you touched on social media, that, you know, people may assume automatically that there is one jurisdiction or two jurisdictions that fall within the.
Good question.
The, the Oregon community schools community, but it's a little bit larger situation.
Yep. There are four, really four entities that we rely on, and I kind of went through that. The, the main road there is the state, right, with, with Route 2 in the bar. And then we have the city of Oregon within the limits, you know, of city. And then we have Jerusalem Township that does kind of the, the neighborhoods, I guess, if you will, out of the township. You know, the Curtis's, the Bono's, and then the neighborhood parts. And, and then the, pretty much all the other roads out there are done by Lucas County. East, west, and north, south roads are done by the county. So I, I've got to call into the county. I think, you know, that's one of our areas that we want to have better communication with to, to try to get on the same page when there's a rough morning going on. So, so we've got to call in and we'll see if we can try to resolve or, or, you know, if there's something we can do to help bring, we are way out here in the farthest east, right? There's, it's not like, I'm aware that, it's not like they park trucks and everything's out this way. My, our guess is that it tends to come west to east. But, but we do need to, to, to have some communication on that because it's, it's been a couple of times now, of course, the last few years, where, where some of the roads are clear and others are not, and it just causes frustration to the community. You know, why did we close? Why didn't we close earlier? Shouldn't we have? Or, you know, we've had a couple of times where we've been the only school that's closed. And I believe rightly so on, on those occasions. So. So, yeah, you're right. But we do have four entities we try to work with, let alone really five with our own people that do all our properties that we, that we do. So.
Hal, I think this is one thing I think you guys got to take great pride in. Started back with Lonnie as superintendent, and you've taken that, kind of that next level and, you know, making that timely for those working parents.
Yep, yep.
This is one thing, and the community kind of spoke, or we listened to, or listened.
And I learned a lot during when Mr. Rivera was superintendent. He had two of the worst years that we can imagine. We had, we had the most snow those two years, and he had a lot of experience, or gained a lot of experience those two years.
I think what you did this last time, the explanation behind it, when you posted on social media, it was really beneficial and important.
Good.
As to the why.
Yep.
And then just one, this thing to clarify, there's really no calamity day in the schedule. Like, when the hours were good.
Correct.
No longer track how many days we.
Correct. I, I guess that's the terminology that's stuck in my head. But you're right. What, there's a minimum number of hours our, our schools need to operate. We're well above both, both levels. There's an 920 level and a 1,001 level. And so we're way above on both of those. But, so, so basically, each day that we're not here because of a weather day, it just knocks those hours down.
And that those limitations with what, elementary and then high school.
It's case, case six.
We came in some one time when we had all the delays with the kindergarten.
Yeah, yep, yep. It can't, I mean, if you have eight to 10 days off, you're, you're going to be pushing the limits. You're going to be close to that 920.
But the delays can look if they add up with.
True. Or a ton of delays on top of that, right, every two hours. Yep, absolutely. Yep. And we do keep track of that. And I know Mr. Quigg does through EMIS, and then we do just in our office, just kind of keep a track of the hours as best we can. So. And then if there's, and then really any questions on any other topic, and, and certainly, if there's something, you know, I, I do reports every, 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 you know, month that we meet. And I just kind of, sometimes just what's on my mind and what's, but if there's other things that you'd like to hear about as a board, since we're kind of got some new members here, you know, let me know. If there's topics that you would like to hear more about, you know, I, I'm more than happy to, to share out a little bit about those topics to help educate you, help educate the public. There's so many things to pick from. I need some guidance to even begin to, to guess what's maybe on your minds or what you think's on the public's minds to, to dive into and give a little background. And if I don't have the background, I have one of my team members. We used to have leadership team members every month, and it's certainly something we can bring back. I'll, I'll talk with, with Carol and others about doing that. And then you get an update every month from one of our administrative team members, which we can certainly kind of re-institute. COVID kind of threw that all off whack. But we, we need to get back to doing those things. So.
And the same with student council from the high school.
Yep.
If I can get that bit, too.
Yep. And get some students more in front of us. So that's really going to be an effort of mine moving forward. That's my lengthy report.
And Facet.
Facet, yeah, we have Facet kids here, too.
Okay. Any old business? Board committee reports, finance?
Finance committee, Matt, Gene pretty much covered everything in her report.
Cap improvements, Matt. Performing arts centers on schedule for remodel. Outside concrete was poured last week, and the inside is supposed to be poured this week. The AC and the Ike and Clay auditoriums will be put out for bid this week. And the AC and the Ike and Facet cafeterias likewise will be put out for bids. Instruction is anticipated to be completed by 8/1, and ESER project, the ESER funds can be used for those projects. Then the priority for our next two big projects will be the new roof on this portion of the high school and the underground piping remodel at Clay, which has been kind of a mess for a number of years and really needs to be taken care of.
Stop.
Stop. Oh, I'm sorry, what'd I say?
You say Clay.
I'm sorry. It's stop. It closes a number of problems over there, so we're going to get that done also. And that's capital improvements. Policy, we have no new, nothing new from the state academic?
We talked a little bit about this at our last meeting in December. Governor Dewine subsequently signed Senate Bill 229 into law in December, which exempts districts from retaining a third grade student under the third grade reading guarantee for the 2021, 22 school year. As you recall, I believe I mentioned that only once in the, in the history since we've been doing this has anybody been retained because the district's done a great job. Our teachers and our administrators have, are working and making sure our kids are prepared to move forward. There was a professional development day on Friday. We're continuing to review grades five through eight English language art curriculum materials. As our digital license for studies said, expire at the end of the year. I'm ready. Reading and math diagnostic benchmarking runs until February 1st. I was on our star today, and the children were working in that particular area. And following up on what Mr. Gregory said, Ken Jordan Parent Night is going to be March the 9th at 6:00 PM. And it will be held via Zoom. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Legislative is in here, student achievement, do you see?
Okay. Board discussion. Anything that the board members wish to bring up?
Okay, one thing I'll point out, the Clay Powerlifting Club is hosting a Raise the Bar Powerlifting Meet on Saturday at Clay. I think they've done a good job. Hope the other team, they've got some surprisingly strong kids on that team. And watching them powerlifting me is kind of cool, the way that it's like mass confusion, but in some ways organized with the three events that they do. So play it at home, so come on out and watch it.
What time do you know?
I don't know. I know their tickets and their electronic sale, and they go on sale tomorrow. So hopefully, we need to all put them in.
I know, I know it'll be in the morning through like mid-afternoon, if I remember right. We also have a musical on DVD we're going to share that.
The musical?
Which is this weekend. I think it's a bit.
Radio.
Radio Girls. Yeah, thank you.
There's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And the wrestling tournament's over.
Yeah, that was on last week. We got sixth or fifth? I don't know. Fifth or sixth? Sixth. Pretty good out of 55 teams.
Anything else for the good of the board?
Okay, executive session. We will have an executive session. It will be for preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. No action will be taken or dismissed from the executive session. Next regular meeting is February 15th at 6:00. Do we want to set a special meeting tonight for?
Strategic planning?
Strategic planning.
That'd be great. Or at least get some, some dates that might work that I could then share with Mr. Keller.
How soon and?
Oh, by the way, the meet starts at 10. I got a text. Thank you, Mrs. Keller. So the powerlifting's at 10 again.
10, okay. So we want to go to February?
Yeah, Fe-February would be, I mean, earlier in February would be great. I'm going to be out the 3rd through the 7th, so we could, you know, if, if we wanted to go into that second, that second week, the 8th, 9th, 10th. It's kind of the week before the board meeting. I don't know if that would work for anyone, particular night?
The 8th is no good for me.
Not the 8th. Maybe the 9th or 10th. And I can confirm with, uh, question two.
9th is a Wednesday, and the 10th is Thursday.
If, if I reached out to both Tom and Mary and just say, hey, maybe the 9th or 10th, what, what works for a Zoom meeting for you? And then whatever time the board would like to meet, I'm sure they're, they're typically very flexible. So, I mean, they could be earlier in 5:30. I know it'd be hard on work night. If 5:30 still worked, or if we had to do 6, whatever. And we could do that same setup, but do it right here and try and make it, you know, a better, you know, kind of a interactive experience. Because we'll all be right by the microphones, which should help them here.
Mr. Zvisky, does either one of those?
Yeah, negative time works at 5:30.
Okay, same.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so look at those two dates with those two people. Anything else for the good of the board? May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Soon.
A second? Second discussion? Roll call. Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
And Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molar?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.